This conference will now be recorded.
Recorded, recorded, recorded.
Not me.
All set, Jamie? Good evening. I'm going to reopen the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 7th, 2021. We started tonight's meeting in executive session at 6 o'clock and adjourned executive session at 6:28. Two items were on the executive session. The first was related to open meeting law complaints filed by Raymond Tomlinson on behalf of Jared and Justin Brackett of the Port and Ember, related to several dates which they alleged that there were open meeting law complaints. We have hired our attorney from KP Law to answer that executive or that open meeting law complaint. With an attorney filing the open meeting law complaint, it's appropriate for the town to protect themselves and hire an attorney to respond to it. It was an extremely lengthy open meeting law complaint. I believe it was over six pages, but we have a draft response to it with some discussion by the board tonight, and the attorneys will send that. Second was in respect to collective bargaining for all town unions if the chair declares an open meeting would be detrimental to the negotiating position of the town body. So, no decisions were made, and we are in negotiation with more than one union, so this will be a common theme for the board for the next few months. With that, would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joe, we're going to go to COVID-19 updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and to the members of the board, filling in for our Public Health Director, Katie O'Neil, who is enjoying an evening off. As you'll see in the packet, the town is tracking three positive cases, and that is three positives out of a total of 374 tests. I think impressively, she indicates that, to date, 8,100 of our 11,000 eligible full-time residents are fully vaccinated, and just under 9,400 have received at least one dose as we progress towards the date that Governor Baker has indicated the cessation, cessation, I should say, of the state of emergency on June 15th. So, these briefings will get shorter and shorter, we hope.
Thank you, Joe. We'll turn it over to Cindy Williams, Executive Director for the Chamber.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry. A little loud tonight. Just a few more housekeeping things. Summer has definitely started early. There are a lot of people around. I don't see the fire chief on, but there have been a number of accidents. I do see the police chief on. People just need to be aware of their surroundings and to slow down. I have noticed this through both Harwich Port and Harwich Center, so just kind of want to remind everybody to look around, make sure you know what's around you, and certainly just take a deep breath. You can get there, just take your time. Also, another reminder that all the business sectors, not just our restaurants and retailer hotels, are struggling due to the staffing issues, so we just kind of ask everyone to be patient, enjoy all of the different sectors. They're excited to be open and to be doing what they love, so we just need to remind everyone to take a deep breath and be respectful because they really have gone through a lot, as we all know. We have a dedicated page on the Chamber website for businesses that are hiring, and it's enlightening. It's not just the hospitality industry, so if anyone is interested or knows of anyone looking for a job, certainly direct them there. Another exciting update, this was our first week of selling the beach and dump stickers, mainly, of course, it's residents and property owners. In the first week, we have sold almost $20,000 of sales. That's insane. But, exciting. Just wanted to also clarify why there is a $3.00 convenience fee for the Chamber. The Chamber does this as a convenience because we are so centrally located, but also when the town offices are closed for the holidays and the community centers close, we are open seven days a week, so that's what that $3.00 convenience fee is for, and it goes right back to promoting our community and what we do. So, just wanted to make people aware of why that is, and certainly, it's been a great week of seeing everyone and seeing people without masks, seeing their smiling faces, and just being excited to get their stickers, both transfer and beach. So, we're ready and happy to be there.
Thank you, Cindy, and thank you to the Chamber for selling the stickers. It is definitely a convenience. Any questions from board members?
None.
All set. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. See you soon.
All right, on to public comment announcement. Anyone for public comment announcement? Hearing nobody, we'll go to consent agenda. Mary?
I move that we discuss and possibly vote on two items in the consent agenda, the 2021 committee reappointment list and the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for April 27th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on either of those? Okay, hearing none. We will roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Moving on to new business.
I move that we discuss and possibly vote to hold a public hearing for the alleged violations at the Seal Pub, 703 Main Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that topic? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
I move that we discuss and possibly vote to authorize the town administrator to be the hearing officer for the public hearing for alleged violations at Seal Pub, 703 Main Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye. Michael, let me, excuse me, let me just ask one question by me.
Sure, I'm going to go to an aye. So, the vote passed, but go ahead.
Yeah, it's passed. I'm not going to refute my vote.
Okay.
It's just, Joe, I was wondering about the timing of the hearing.
Say it again, please.
Timing.
Of the allegation or the hearings?
The hearing.
So, based on this action tonight, we had already prepared a draft letter in anticipation of the board's action. That will go out tomorrow. I believe the hearing is scheduled for June 21st, but I can get specifics on that and confirm that. Point is, is that it will be noticed with a 10-day requirement and held as soon as possible. Thank you for that.
And just to note, the town administrator had previously picked the 21st for what we voted last week. So, important for the public to understand and the police chief to understand, the board is going to take these up quickly this year, and I applaud Joe and the team for getting this, getting the hearing set as quickly as we have. Okay, moving on to C.
C. I move that we discuss and possibly vote to approve vacation care, the vacation carryover request from Carol Coppola, Finance Director.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this?
No.
Don? No discussion?
Aye.
No discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. Mary?
Aye.
No, no.
Oh, no discussion.
My only discussion is the one I've had on the past requests, and Carol is in the room tonight, and it is contractual, but I think, Carol, you've heard this board. I know you're in on one of the votes. It is important that we take our vacation, for all the reasons we've listed in the past, but I think for the town's sake, we are getting, end of the year, we're getting inundated with vacation carryover requests, and I think it's very important that the employees take their vacation time. With that, we'll go to a roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye. D.
I move that we discuss and possibly vote to approve the application permit relative to noise bylaw, Chapter 189-1, Section F, subsection 9, for the Harwich Chamber of Commerce to host music in the port, July 7th through August 25th, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. So, discussion on this, I'll start with a question to Cindy. It says July 7th through August 25th, and I assume that's not every single night, so will you tell us which night it is?
No, it's actually every Wednesday. July 7th is the first Wednesday, so it's every Wednesday in July and every Wednesday in August, August 25th being the last one.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Don?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody again that this isn't the same as the issue that we've been grappling with in terms of noise and other things, is family oriented. I've had people come to me and implore me to allow this again because it helped. Every business has nothing to do with restaurants or pouring or anything else. It has to do with a family-friendly activity. That's great. Everybody comes to it because it's a must-see place, so, again, I can guarantee it's not going to get out of hand.
And it ends at 8:00, which I think is key.
Yeah, and I would echo what Don said. This is an event for everybody in town and visitors. This is not to benefit one business, it's to benefit all businesses, so. Roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
I move that we discuss and possibly vote to approve the one-day entertainment license for a private wedding to be held at Eight Kettle Pond Drive on July 31st, 2021, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this was the item that was on your agenda last week. We failed to notice the address.
Thank you. Mary?
I would just like it noted that the end time is 10:00, and with all the trouble we've had with noise, I want to make sure that the family understands 10 means 10, and even if the entertainment stops, the crowd noise can't continue.
And to Mary's point, Joe, if we could add that into the approval, that the noise bylaw is 150 feet, and they still have to abide by the noise bylaw, and...
Will do. Thank you.
Theme this year is being sensitive to your neighbors. Roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
I move that we discuss and possibly vote to approve a one-day entertainment license for Cape Farm Supplies, 1601 Factory Road. Event to be held on Saturday, June 26th, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this?
I'll say that this is a long-term annual event at this point.
Yes, it is.
Mary?
I just wonder about the 11:00 p.m., if we shouldn't make that 10:00 p.m.
My only comment on that is, this is, as Larry said, a long-time event, and we do not get complaints on this. This is the very end of Factory Road.
There's no neighbors.
Budded by the highway, and only one person really on the left side of that lake looking out from this home on the lake, which is a two, maybe three-season cabin, is the only one that would hear the noise, and I would offer the same as we offered for the last applicant to let them know that noise bylaw still has to be followed.
Then I'm fine with 11:00 o'clock.
Okay, moved and seconded with no further discussion. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
I move that we discuss and possibly vote to approve a one-day entertainment license for the Harwich Inn and Tavern, 77 Route 28, Saturday, June 19th, noon to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Any discussion from the public? Hearing nobody, I'll put it to a vote, roll call. Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
Keep going?
Yes.
I move that we discuss and possibly vote to approve a new 2021 lodging house license for Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC DBA Summer House Cafe, 126 Route 28, pending Fire Department approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Joe?
Mr. Chairman and members, if I may, as you see there, this is pending Fire Department approval, so I would just want to put out there that just because it may be adopted tonight doesn't mean it happens immediately. Those establishments still need to come into compliance.
Any other discussion from the board? Mary?
I just couldn't really read the application, whether it was 12 rooms or 17, and that probably doesn't make a huge difference, but I'm just concerned about a septic, which I'm told is not doing very well, and if the owners of the business believe that they can have 12 or 17 more restrooms and keep their septic limping along.
If I may, it has been vetted by the Health Department, and town has interpreted that number to be 12.
12, okay. Thank you.
Okay, with no further discussion, roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Staying.
And I am an aye. Go ahead with the aye.
I move to discuss and possibly vote to approve a new 2021 common vicular's license for Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC DBA Summer House Cafe, 126 Route 28, pending Fire Department.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? Don? Where's the kitchen? Kitchen's been left off?
Well, I think, if I may, I think last week he said they were bringing the food in. Now, I'm not sure, because they didn't have, whether they're going to warm it there, what they're doing, but they were going to bring it in in plastic containers.
Don?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we're approving everything prior to there being anything in existence. The septic really is substandard. I mean, they're getting everything in place. They mentioned that we're going to bring in lobster rolls. I can't think of anything, if anybody's ever taken a serve safe license, that's more potential for danger than either lobster or the mayonnaise that goes in it. If it's not handled properly, so, I mean, again, they don't have a kitchen. I mean, I'm not sure what we're approving. There are things that are fairly benign, in my experience with nonprofits, or like hot dogs. They'll outlive humankind. There's almost nothing else that I can think of that you could take in from the outside because you'd have, also, you'd have to have a certified inspected conveyance to bring it to their location. So, for me, I'm just not in to approve, that's why I'm staying on the last one, I'm not really interested in approving incrementally stuff that hasn't actually been approved by any regulatory board.
My only comment on this is, it's June 7th. This is a business that has been in place for a very long time, doing things, doing things either the same way or less than the same way, not more than the same way. There's been a fair amount of activity over there, cleaning up the property, cleaning up the building, and the pending approvals, in my opinion, as Joe just said, do not negate their responsibility to take care of them, and on the food prep side of it and the kitchen part of it, the vicular's license doesn't circumvent the Board of Health. And in the last action we took, the Board of Health still has to approve everything before they get a permit to open. Don?
Yeah, I'm not really talking about them approving a kitchen so that they can start preparing things. What I'm worried about is that we have no assurance that they have the facilities to actually properly handle something that's being brought in elsewhere and being served. I'm not trying to jack them up or anything, but again, what they were, I mean, I'm already on record as saying that what they were is almost irrelevant because the person who was operating that has no relationship to the guy who owns the building who's leasing it to this person. So, there's no continuing operation or anything. I'm just concerned about public safety. As far as I understand it, and anybody can correct me if they want to, the Board of Health generally does one major inspection a year at the beginning of the year for places. I have no real assurance that they're going to inspect that they've got freezer or refrigeration or anything, I mean, aside from a kitchen, just the kind of things that you'd need to preserve the food that they were, they themselves said what they were going to serve, it wasn't me.
You know, some points, Don, I agree with, but other points, I believe that that is a Board of Health issue, and they're not going to let them open, personally. Based on the comments that we heard from Board of Health last time and pending the approvals, in my mind, we're giving them the tools that they need to get open, and our regulatory boards will do their job to let them open. If they don't do their job, they don't open.
For the record, I am not questioning the Board of Health.
Right. I know. I'm only telling you based on what I would.
Or else I'm not going home tonight.
I would just say...
Any other discussion? Larry?
Very quickly, I have actually taken a Safe Surf and had to pass it one time, and they are required, even when they bring it in, to have proper handling of the food and spicy mayonnaise as part of the requirements and that, and they've been, to do this part, they would have had to pass that, and I'm sure that was Board of Health check as well. So, I would hate to hold them up at this point, and they need to start.
There's a difference between the Board of Health and the Health Department.
No, I agree with that. What I'm saying is, is that it's incorrect to say they're on their own without any safety training. I think you can do this after the Safe Surf program.
Surf safe.
Surf safe. Been a while.
Yeah, I totally get that. I'm not saying anything about that. I'm just saying that the permit's not handled by the Board of Health. It's actually issued by the Health Department, and I'm not talking about whether they got serve safe training. I'm talking about, do they have the equipment to be able to store it in a healthy way, disperse it? What we got is an application in front of us, so you don't have anything behind it.
The only other comment that I'll make is that the third thing that was on for them tonight that I decided to pull off of the agenda was the entertainment license, and I decided that it would be more appropriate to get the business open for, at least partly open, before we take up entertainment, and knowing that that's going to be a much larger conversation and that we, in the near future, have the, we're going to have the noise discussion for one whole meeting, so.
I'm just explaining my vote.
Yep, absolutely. Mary, anything further?
No. I share, I share some of Don's concerns, but I recognize your comments as well, Michael, so I'm good.
Okay. So, I'm going to go to a roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Nope.
And I am an aye. Okay, I think that's the last of your reading, Mary.
Okay.
All right, so the next one up is Jay under New Business. Discussion and possible vote on next step regarding 2021 annual town meeting failed articles is how it was listed. There was a series of articles at town meeting that didn't pass and that there was conversation on, and I thought, to be fair to the public, we should bring them back for discussions on potential next steps or no potential next steps. There's still several to come. The two that were chosen tonight were Article 33, Hinkley's Pond Watershed Preservation Project, and the Article 36, Sand Pond. So, I'm going to start with Article 33, Hinkley's Pond. That article was in the packet tonight, and that was the acreage that is on 124 and Headwaters, known as the Jenkins Bog. That failed or didn't even go before town meeting, but there was a fair amount of people at town meeting that showed interest in it, to the point where there was, they wanted to make a motion from the floor. I have, in preparation for this, I have spoken to Michael Locke from Harwich Conservation Trust, and I received an email from him, per my request, based on the answers that he gave me. I'm not going to read the whole email, but I will read a little and then open it up for discussion from the board. The email came through from a James Norcross, who represents the Harwich Conservation Trust and the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts. The email, and I did not get this email until today, or it would have been in the packet. It was sent to my, an email address I no longer use. "I represent the nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust and worked with Harwich Conservation Trust partnering nonprofit The Compact of Cape Cod Trusts, Inc. on a recent buy and hold of a property owned by the Jenkins family. In speaking with my client, I understand there is some confusion regarding the applicability, applicability, sorry, of Mass General Law, Chapter 61A, to this particular transaction." And that was one of the questions that I raised to Michael Locke, and it was related to some conversation with CPC. This doesn't apply because it's going to go to conservation, so that Chapter 61A would only be if the property in question is being sold or converted for residential, commercial, or industrial use. So, basically, what this says is Harwich Conservation Trust had the Cape Cod Conservation Trust buy and hold this piece of land. So, it is in their hands now, and they are giving Harwich Conservation Trust until December to raise the funds to purchase this property. I asked if it was still something that Harwich Conservation Trust wanted to pursue with the town of Harwich and to bring this back for a town vote. Michael Locke explained to me today that because of the way it has been done now and the way it's been held, that he would suggest not having the town of Harwich pursue it and to let Harwich Conservation Trust try and raise the money to purchase this property or the lack of money that we didn't bring forward, which was the 240,000. He said if they don't raise it by December, and I don't have the exact date in December, if they don't raise it, it would certainly be a conversation that we can explore, but at this time, he did not see the reason for the Board of Selectmen and the town of Harwich to be involved. With that, I will open that up for conversation, and I will start with Larry.
Well, there's not much to say about it at this point, because we're basically all of it is the point. We'll wait and see what happens at the, towards, the December timeframe is problematic, however, that's past CPC deadlines, and so you may want to go back to Michael and be sure that if he does want something between CPCs, he re-looks at their schedule.
December 31st is the date. It was in the email.
Yeah, I'm just...
Point taken. Mary?
I'm puzzled by this, but frankly, I don't see it worth educating me. I can talk to someone privately to understand how this happened.
Don?
I share what Larry said. I mean, that was the first thought I had. It's a self-inflicted wound on their part because they're gambling that they'll do it. There is no Plan B. If they don't get the funding in place by December, they're waiting another year for CPC. The only thing I can say is, I mean, I've talked to Dave Nixon about it. I was on the conference call with Larry originally when, right before town meeting. It seems to me that, in part, and the town administrator can correct me here, too, in part, this thing got really messed up because it was unclear who the real applicant was, and the money was actually more, and we're not buying the whole thing, we're actually buying a portion of it that had to do with recreational access. That having been said, I mean, if this were done correctly, couldn't they at least put in an application as an applicant themselves without our Real Estate Normal Space Committee? Because it still fits in that same cubby hole.
Sure, sure. If I may, Mr. Chairman, if by there you mean...
The trust.
The Harwich Conservation Trust is a private entity.
As an app.
They certainly could. And I would just want to add out there for the record that when this first came before the board, it was a completely different deal, shape-wise and everything else, than what ended up contemplated before town meeting. So, there were a lot of moving parts that changed over time, that really changed the complexity of the deal itself.
And that's kind of what I'm saying, is my recommendation to them, both publicly and privately, would be put together an application because you could always withdraw it. It doesn't have to get its way, all the way to town meeting, but if you don't put together an application, and something falls through, they don't have a backup plan.
Thank you, Don. My only argument to that is if there's another important piece of land that comes forward that takes the money out of that bucket, and it seems to me, based on my conversation with Michael and this email, and the fact that they didn't come back before the town, that they're pretty confident that they're going to raise the money. And at this point, based on the fact that their legal has represented them and their legal supports this, and the Cape Compact has pledged the money, they own it now. So, Harwich Conservation Trust only owns it if they raise the money, so.
I wish them well.
I wish them well as well, but I will certainly relay the feedback in a return email to Michael Locke, and I would echo Joe's comments. This deal changed more than once, and I know CPC didn't receive a appraisal that was stuck in executive session prior to town meeting, and I know that they ultimately withdrew their vote because it was a different article, so. My reason for bringing this up, it was important to, several people that were at town meeting want this piece of land, and just the message to the public is, it sounds like they're going to get the piece of land, just in a different way. And just the message to the public is, it sounds like they're going to get the piece of land, just in a different way. All right, and the next one was San Pond Revitalization. Originally, at last meeting, we were going to bring in Lincoln Hooper and Eric Beebe from the REC and the DPW Director, sorry, Lincoln Hooper. Both were able to get together. I did call, Danielle sent them an email. I called them both and told them what I wanted them to bring tonight. Eric was not available, nor was the Chair of the REC Commission, so I got an email instead, and they worked together. If everybody remembers correctly, the discussion on that and the failed part of that more related to the playground.
Right.
So taking the playground out, some of the other repairs to that property seemed necessary. So I put it back on the agenda for that. Link responded, Eric called. I told Eric what I was thinking, or the, or what information I thought the board would want. And same with Link. Link responded with an email to Danielle today, copying Joe Powers, Megan, Eric Beebe, and myself. And the moral of the story is, "The old fence will, will be replaced with the guardrail-style fence we place at other beaches and parks with recreation, paying the estimated $1,400 in materials and DPW installing the materials. They were ordered today, and installation will be placed on the work order Q once we have the materials." He figured within the next couple of weeks, based on the conversation. "The parking lot was scheduled to be graded anyway, as normal routine. They grade the parking lots of all the beaches that have gravel parking lots every year." He did comment that they're, they're good for a couple of weeks until the kids go in and start doing donuts, like Long Pond has already happened. But that is due to be graded. And then the demo of the old building will take approximately $5,000 in expenses. Demo disposal of, block disposal, excavator rental, utility removal, and would-be fall work. We will probably need a demo permit from the Building Department and an RDA or Administrative Review from the Conservation Department. With that, I will defer to Joe for any comments, and then questions or extra requests from the board.
Nothing for the ad at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Don?
Lifeguard stations?
Was that part of the original article?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, they made the, they made the pitch, the, they really need them rebuilt. There was supposed to be one playground and lifeguard station and a couple of other things, in at least their presentation.
Okay.
I didn't remember a lifeguard station. I thought they said that was not part of the proposal.
I don't recall that. I mean, at one time, early on, they were talking about swimming lessons there, then they decided against that and keep swimming lessons.
I'm, I'm fine with as long as they're not putting off, because it sounded like there were egregious circumstances that they needed to rebuild the lifeguard stations.
That's certainly something we can follow on, follow through with and ask. Mary, any comments?
No, I'm with you. The big thing was the, the little playground effect, but it makes sense to clean it up.
Yeah.
Mary?
No, I'm agreeing with that. My standard comment, just for the, the record, I would like to know the Man hours DPW is putting in, not, let's face it, not the gra, not the parking lot, because that's standard.
On the fence.
Right, just so we have a complete understanding.
Okay.
Since I, you know, my main concern was the expense and the playground being, one more playground that I argue wasn't necessary at that point. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the direction they're taking.
Okay, so tomorrow morning with staff, Joe will bring up the lifeguard station, if that is a request, and try and add that to their, to the mix and the indirect costs from Link. Joe, fence seems like it's coming out of REC's budget, based on Eric Beebe's comments. The $5,000 demo, do we have the money to do that? Is that, would that also be coming out of DPW and REC? I guess that would be my only questions. I support the work, and I think that the consensus of town meeting was they wanted something done there, just not a playground.
I can follow up on those questions.
Okay. And then if, if Joe, that is the case, will you follow up on the conservation permit as well as the Building Department permit and get them what they need for that?
And typically, if I may, the Building Department permit usually comes from building to the Administration Department, but seeking the signature of the Chair to, to approve the demolition.
Okay. And then I just would make one comment. I think that this was an agenda item that was put on by me. And I think that the staff did a great job getting it to the department heads. And I think the department heads collaborating to get this done and bring it to the board and not having them sit through a meeting, even though this was a long meeting, having them take their time to sit through a meeting for very basic information and getting this done before the meeting, it worked. And, and I hope that we can continue to try and make that work, on simple projects, anyway. And that's it for that. And then the next one, this, this was requested by Don, so Discussion and Possible Vote to transfer the amount collected in the cell phone tower lease to support the Affordable Housing Trust in the amount of $218,293.95. And with that, I'll turn it over to Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I shared with you, the, the fund was created out of the cell tower fund for, that, and it was voted at town meeting in the early 2000s that anything in excess of what it costs to operate it, like buying a flag, when that money went in there, it was, it was a vote of the town meeting to allow the Board of Selectmen to disperse from that fund for that purpose, you know, for affordable housing. Rather than going back to town meeting, we took a policy decision four years ago, three of us were here at that point, that we would annually vote to disperse the aggregated funds for the prior year to the Housing Trust Fund for their care and use for projects. We had, we didn't do it last year. Some of you are aware of something that's coming up that I can't say in open session, but I could certainly read you in later, Mary. There's a need for the money. So I'd appreciate it if we did the annual vote and the money would be transferred. Oh, well, Carol's gone. Just, it would just change where it resides in an account for the time being.
Thank you. Any questions, Mary?
No.
Larry?
No, I agree with what Don says. It's been our intent to do it.
Yep, I, I would agree with, I would agree with Don. Before we go to a motion, which Don, I'll ask you to make. Joe, is there anything from you?
None of this matter, nope.
Don?
Yeah, I'd like to move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a transfer from the Cell Tower Trust Fund, an amount of, what is it, 218? What he said. Yeah, and transfer that, like some, to the Affordable Housing, Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Old Business Discussion, the Snack Shack at Saco Tucket Harbor License Agreement. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We did receive an email late this afternoon from Attorney Matt Fair at KP Law, who's been engaging in conversations with Attorney Matt Kelly on behalf of the Griffiths family. Megan was going to reach out to see if Attorney Fair was able to join. I'm not sure if he's on the call. So I'm going to take that as a no, and I'd just like to read from his email, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Presently, he thinks the best course of action present for the town is to try to assign the lease at this point for a one-year additional year, meaning this year, this season, and allow the new vendor to use the equipment that's present and owned by the Griffiths family so that the season is covered. Then the town could take up the disposition question of the equipment. So anything other than that would require RFP. And Attorney Fair, I think it's fair to say, does not think the town has significant leverage based on the original lease document.
Thank you, Joe. Just one question before I go to the board members. Assignment of lease, how would that work?
Basically, that the town and the vendor would agree to have the vendor pick the sub-vendor. The town would not have any control over that.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with them because I've dealt with them in the federal government. The problem is with an assignment, you agree to the original scope of the contract. You have to execute all the terms and conditions of the contract. And to what Mary had said previously, this got way away from us. We started specifying pages of menus and how you operate and the hours. And I'm not even certain that those hours were ever what was actually served. Nor am I positive that the extensive menu that was required under this thing was ever really fully available, item for item, you know, for the entire season. You're stuck on an assignment with the same contract with a different face behind it. That's, that's what it is.
Mary?
I got a question, I think for you, Joe. How does, how do we select someone if we assign it? We get out of the RFP process, so what does that mean? We just pick someone?
So we don't. The, the present vendor would be the one to do that.
The present vendor, so the, the family that was operating it?
Correct.
They would pick who would come in and run it?
Correct.
For this season?
For the duration of the season.
Okay. That's how you get around the whole process and make it happen quickly?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, to, to the quickly part.
Yep.
I, I, I don't want to listen, lose the opportunity to say that I don't like it for the town, because we have no control.
Right.
And, but I think this, this lease, not to be snarky, but is apparently the gift that keeps on giving, so. I think we'll be able to extricate ourselves from the lease after the season and move on and go from there.
When does the season end?
Would be, I generally believe, the middle of October. That's usually when they gave their report in the last percentages. The 7% typically over the lease agreement.
One second, Larry. A little follow-up from Don. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. If they do that, there's a chain of events that go on here. First of all, how were they, how were they organized? Was that an LLC?
I, I believe it's an LLC.
So the family had other representation in the LLC, or?
I'm not familiar with their structure. I do know that.
I'm curious of who the...
Doc's side is an LLC.
Yeah, but I'm curious of how it was formed. It may be him, you know, the former lead person plus two other proteges, or it might be the family. I don't know who we're dealing with, but that's number one.
Could just respond to that. When I did that research several months ago, it was the original individual, Mr. Griffiths. That is to say, the man who passed away. So when I looked into that about three months ago, he was the sole officer of the LLC.
And I bring that up because an assignment can only really happen by the assent of the original holder of the contract, who is no longer with us. I mean, the LLC doesn't have a, doesn't have a, an executive officer. Secondarily, we got equipment sitting in there, and we're dickering over, you know, taking it on. If this happens, the assignment actually assigns the facility as it is to the successor. So we're not really resolving much of any, anything other than putting some warm bodies in there and hoping for the season to go well.
No, and I think, Joe, to be fair, is this is a Band-Aid offer based on feedback from the board. So this is, he's, this, this really, Matt and Joe, what they mentioned, as Joe just said, he doesn't like it, is the only way he sees out of this quickly, as Mary, as Mary pointed out. Larry?
Yeah, I'm going to look at, I think, a slightly different direction, because if I, well, we don't like it. We're taking a risk. But I would look at the other, we also take a risk if we don't do this, because basically, as I understand it, we don't open it this summer, because we can't act that fast. And I think an empty building and empty equipment, we're going to lose a lot if we don't do anything this summer. That's one point. The second point I would make is, is that I believe we still would have some control, because whoever subleases it still has to comply with the lease. Granted, a lot of, a lot of imperfections, Don, but it still has to comply with the same lease that the original owner did. So we do have at least that control over the operation. And so I don't, if there were an option of opening up this summer without kind of gerrymandering this as we're doing, I'd be all for it, but I don't see it. And I think the downside of not opening it is, is also a risk. And I think in my mind, that's a greater risk than trusting and working on. You've had contact with the family. I assume they're, they're in discussions with you, so at least we know what was going on. But I think we need to move, move ahead with it.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Don.
Through you. How much were we paid on average the last couple of years as a result of the lease? Just to get it out in the public?
I, I apologize. I, I can't think of the, the monthly sum. I want to say that the total was, the number 24,000 kicks around in my head.
It was 20-something.
24,000, I want to say, for that season. And then above that, it was, it's kind of clunky language, but it was 7% of proceeds above and beyond netting out certain costs. So it was a gross net, if you will. If memory serves correctly, that brought in an additional $7,000 last year. So for the truncated season, because of the pandemic impact on that, we still saw $7,000 above and beyond the rent.
30,000, give or take, for an entire year in a good year.
Larry, go ahead.
One question I have, is if we proceed with a sublease and a person will come, whoever takes it over, we look at that and says, this is god-awful, use a legal term. Can we, do you have any ability to stop it? Say that we cancel, cancel the lease?
Presumably no, because of the condition of the lease itself. There was no...
No escape clause.
There were no protections, if I can say it that way. I, I'm not an attorney, and I try not to play one on Monday nights on TV, but...
Thank you.
I, I've read enough of, thank you. Makes me feel better, too. I've read enough of our existing leases to know the difference, and the town is not well-served with the language. So that we, we have a mechanism to continue to bring in revenue. Equally important, I would say, is we have a mechanism to continue to provide a service, not just for the boating public, but to the general public. And I have a pathway to perhaps do it better in the future.
I still don't know who's the signatory.
Well, we'll get that back. Joe, I imagine, we'll talk about it tomorrow morning, but we'll get that right away.
Yeah, the corporation papers still reference one individual.
Right, Mary?
One thing that I think is a positive in all of this is the attorney is local Harwich Matt Kelly. We're not dealing with someone that we don't know. It's a local, grew up here in town and has nothing but the town's best interests. So that gives me some level of comfort with taking this route.
It was Attorney Kelly who called to update us on the situation. He's been very communicative through the entire process.
Yeah, that's, that's good news.
This is my only question, Joe, is are we currently being paid the rent on the building?
No, there, there is no licensed establishment there, because there was no renewal. That's what first drew our attention to that fact. There's nothing going on.
So we basically would need to, if we, if we, if we, this board decide to put an RFP together as quickly as possible, we have a special meeting, if it goes 10 days, to get an RFP in the pipeline. We ultimately have the ability to tell them to remove their equipment.
Correct. I think that would be, I, I think counsel might advise us that that would be the first step.
Okay.
That if the town is not interested in going with the sublease, then we would have to give them notice to remove all of their personal effects from the establishment. We'd obviously want to have staff there to ensure that that's what happens. Then, once they empty out the building, it's completely our responsibility, and we could take whatever action, including an RFP, to find someone else to come back in.
And my, my thought is that this board should consider that, and we should consider an RFP that is favorable for year one, knowing that they're not going to get a liquor license right away, and then go to a year two, three, four, and five, and build upon what we, what we come up with. But I don't believe with staff and this board that we can't come up with an RFP in short order, with the understanding that it's going to take you 60 to 90 days to get a liquor license. But by the way, we're not going to, we want to sell some snacks, and we want to have a menu that you choose, not something that we choose, and a much better lease. I personally think that that would be a much better way to go, and I do think that we would get some people that would bid on it this year. Worst-case scenario, we don't. But assigning a lease and letting somebody else go in there and build some sort of history is an unfair advantage to a future RFP in my mind. And, and I think that we should consider putting together an RFP that makes sense and going out with it. And, and worst-case scenario, we're already June 7th.
I know.
So they, they would have been open pre-Memorial Day.
Correct.
So we're losing time. So, we're losing time, time by talking about this. Don?
That's where I was leading with what I was saying, basically. If you do the assignment, what's included in that is the expiration date of the contract. We are not going to be able to come up with a contract, the RFP subsequent to that in, like, six weeks and kick them out and put somebody else in. That is not legal. Once we do the assignment, they play out the string to the expiration date of the contract. And I've said this before, and I believe the chair knows other people, but I could think of three local places that have the wherewithal that were interested in operating that, who are in proximity, who could easily bring some labor and equipment into it to at least get it going in a couple of weeks after an RFP. It isn't, it isn't as dire as it all seems because we missed the Memorial Day weekend, and I was in the food business, and I can tell you that Memorial Day is huge, and then it craters until the end of the school year, June 22nd or so. And whatever it is you think you're doing in a restaurant or a food store, you're not doing for that three-week period because everybody's going away again. You're really, we're really not, we're losing a lot of revenue. I would go the accelerated RFP route, if I were doing it myself.
Well, if I clarify for me, what's our legal requirements for an RFP in terms of timeline?
Say again, please.
How much time do, are we required to give for an RFP?
Well, beyond the notice, because the notice can be as short as two weeks in any of the publication sources, but I think more than that, it's, as I think we're seeing from the last time this happened, you want to be very clear in your RFP documents about what you're looking for, but also what the lease will cover in the future. I know I'm not betraying any trade secrets when I tell this board that, you know, this is an operation that went from, as I understood it, cold snacks, cold beverages, to, you know, a multiple-seat restaurant operation. If we intend to continue with the latter, then we have to really shore up the RFP and the resultant lease to accomplish that. And so, that's going to be a couple of weeks' time, plus a couple of weeks to get the responses, and then to evaluate them. So, we could be looking at a six-to-eight week process if we started tomorrow, even with a local firm perhaps winning the RFP.
And I take your point, but that's my concern is, I think, with that, that's beating, and I do think that we could simplify a lot by not trying to dictate everything that the restaurant does, we can make it simplify the RFP. But if I read the newspapers right, and I know wherever it's worth, it's very difficult to buy anything today. So, just getting equipment could take, could take the summer. You know, before, we were hoping that we could issue an RFP and they would take the equipment. It would be a, you know, turnkey operation. Our discussion tonight, that's not so. We would ask them to take the equipment away, I guess. Is that right? There's no, because that would shorten the timeframe, it was a turnkey operation rather than having to purchase new equipment.
Yeah, that was, those are the ensuing discussions that Attorney Fair was having with Attorney Kelly.
And that's, and that hasn't been resolved yet, Don?
No, it's my understanding through Attorney Fair that the family has made it clear that they want to have a say in who follows up in the operation with their equipment. They're not interested, it's my understanding, of selling the equipment to the town. So, to me, that's what, you know, sort of changed everything. The other thing that I want to put out there, and I apologize because I haven't had the opportunity to connect with Attorney Fair this week, but, you know, there's that statement about we could do a one-year agreement. I'd want him to explore that further because, so does that then mean that both parties agree that the lease is null and void? Because it would have to, because the lease goes, I believe, two more years. So, if the lease goes two more years, I don't see how we're talking about a one-year assignment. And so, that's what I'd need our attorney to explain. But, but to your point, Larry, this came about because the family decided that they do not want to sell the equipment to the town, is my understanding. So, we do have several options. The control option from the town's perspective, which, again, has cascading difficulties that goes with it, but we can say politely and gently, please remove your equipment from our property. And then we can deal with our property. Because there's no out clause, I don't know what standing they would have to take action against the town, just as the town presently can't take action against them. But again, I've been operating under, as the attorney has, that the town is still desirous of having an operation there this year, this, the 2021 summer season, if at all possible.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things, just what Larry said, there's a very robust secondary market for used restaurant equipment. Rarely does somebody start up something with all brand-new equipment everywhere. When I started my store, there was like five or six pieces of equipment we got through restaurant supply houses. Given what happened over the last year, I think there's more rather than less inventory available because a lot of restaurants went out of business during that period of time. I am still stuck with how you actually effectuate something like this because this isn't like going to probate and we're selling Dad's house. It's an LLC, which exists beyond everybody else, and if he didn't have the forethought, and I don't know the answer to that, only the lawyer would, who you're signing with is really what I'm still stuck on. Because if he was the only listed officer in an LLC, the LLC's kind of stuck. It doesn't have an authorized signature, signator to enter into an assignment contract. So, I mean, even if they're willing, even if the family was willing, it doesn't really matter to me unless they somehow have derived signature authority to that separate entity. It's a corporation that exists without anybody populating it otherwise.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Joe. Joe, is there an action that you would, you would like to see from the board tonight, or do you want one more week? Because if I had to make a motion now, it would be to ask them to remove their equipment from our building. We never did this as a money-making venture. We did this as a service to the public. However, they don't get to dictate the terms, regardless of what the lease says, about putting somebody that they may like or may know in this town building that is way under market rate and competing, what, in my mind, competing with other close restaurants in a market that there really isn't any employees to hire. And to Don's point, we can buy equipment. There's several equipment houses that you can buy used restaurant equipment from and fairly fresh equipment. So, if we're going to go that route, we should be able to explore that route. But if I had to decide tonight on whether or not to just vacate this deal and then put an RFP together for whatever we could salvage this year, which may, by the sounds of it, be mid-July, early August, then so be it. Because again, this was, the intent of this was not to make money. They have not been able to, tragic circumstances, very tragic circumstances, they cannot open and fulfill their agreement on the lease. Despite what the lease says, the intent was to be open from this time of year to that time of year and pay the town X amount of money. They can't fulfill at least their verbal obligation, and then we could get into what the attorneys did wrong later. But if I had to vote tonight, it would be, it's time to get your stuff out of our building, and then for the Board of Selectmen to move forward, not to allow them to dictate assigning that lease to somebody else. Because I don't believe that's a fair process in any way, shape, or form. And if there was a clause in the contract that allowed for it, they would have already done it, and they'd be open.
Well, first, I appreciate the question.
Interesting.
And not just because of your answer, but that's where I'm inclined to be. Meaning, if the board took the action that you just mentioned this evening, I would be comfortable with that as your administrator, and I think it's the appropriate action by the town. Because first, we're recognizing that there's a bad arrangement out there, bad for both parties, and through an act of God, we're all able to walk away from it. I think we ought to walk away from it. Because I don't think the town ever wants to surrender control. And while I agree with the point of we never looked at this as a money-making opportunity, I am looking in the direction of a certain member who has said we should chase revenue, and I think we have a, and I think that's a wise directive, by the way. I think we have a wonderful vista at our harbor where we could entice people very easily to come enjoy food and beverage and/or take food and beverage onto their vessels. No different than we are very easily enticing golfers and non-golfers to sit out overlooking on another beautiful vista, the 10th tee. And so, we know the town didn't look, want to grow up and become restaurateurs as a town, but here we are, but there's a benefit there. But long story short, I think the town should always want to exercise control and remain in control. It's our venue, it's our license, it's our establishment, it's our harbor. And so, I think if the board was inclined to vote in the manner that you spoke of, I would think that's an agreeable action.
Any comments from board members?
I'll only comment, I agree with this, we never saw all this revenue, but we did see it as another very positive action to Harwich and Harwich Port in terms of the overall culture and environment, adding another scenic use to take advantage of Wishmere Village. It is another incentive for tourists and actually all the residents to enjoy Harwich. And so, we don't, my concern is I don't want to lose that, and I want it to happen as quickly as we can. I don't want to lose control either, but I want to be sure we look at the downside if we lose that for a year, because people admit, I'm one of them, I've come to expect that as a good place to go have a beer and enjoy the harbor. And I'm not contributing that much revenue, by the way.
All right, well, you're out. Mary, any further comment?
I think I'm in sync with what you and Joe are proposing. It'd be nice if you thought the assignment would work, but I think the risk is far too great, and I think we're better even if we lose another six, eight weeks. Let's just make it clean.
Don?
What she said.
All right, the only other food for thought, no pun intended. We could put an RFP out. That is our deck, that is our picnic tables, that is our space.
It is our building.
We could put an RFP out for a food truck, and people could get their food and enjoy it on the deck and get us through the summer. A one-year RFP for a place for someone to park a food truck doesn't go against leasing the snack shack or anything else, but it would allow for something at the harbor to enjoy the view on the deck. So, something to explore after this. But could I get a motion on vacating? How do you want it to be, Joe? What is a language that's appropriate to tell them to get their equipment out of our building?
I would say something along the lines, given the circumstances that the town's been made aware of by the prior operator and their inability to operate as was envisioned by the town, then the town respectfully will give them adequate time, and you could put a timeframe on it, 10 days, 14 days, whatever, to work with the town to remove any personal effects and equipment that belong to the LLC and not the town.
Don?
Doesn't the precursor action have to be that through inability to perform, the lease is terminated?
Yes, except that counsel said that provision does not exist.
But they still lack the ability to perform.
Agreed. I wouldn't disagree with the language. I think the net effect is we give them a certain amount of time under town's guidance and participation to remove their, their personal effects and equipment.
Are we sure we want to make a motion, or we want to just encourage the town administrator to pursue what he knows our end objective is legally?
I think in the end, it needs to be a message from the Board of Selectmen, not the town administrator. We're the licensing authority, we gave them the license, and now they're occupying a building, we're getting no rent, we're getting no public service out of it, and we, they've made a comment that they do, or a statement that they do not want to sell their equipment to the town, they want to assign the lease, if they, in my opinion, if they could have, and if they can, we'll hear about it right quick. But I think it's our, would be our intention for them to vacate the premises, and we should say such.
In that event, that I move that we terminate the lease in the, for inability to perform, in that we give them a reasonable amount of time, two weeks?
21 days.
21 days to remove any equipment not owned by the town.
Why 21 days rather than two weeks? Why not?
Do two weeks, I'm just trying to be nice. I mean, they got to, they got to get trucks, they got to get people, they got to move it, and we can't occupy that building in three weeks, so what's the difference?
But I do want to say that any equipment not owned by the town, because as you point out, the deck is ours.
Joe will make sure that town staff is there with a list of what they can take and what they can't take.
So, that's the motion then, to not pursue the assignment option, and to afford them 21 days to remove the equipment.
Second.
Discussion, Larry?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I still maintain time is in essence, and I would like, that's why I questioned 14, 21 days. I would also ask that we start the RFP project, process immediately.
Yeah.
So, the word gets out that it's going to happen, and we get, because if that's happening, then people will start looking for equipment.
Joe, I believe through John Rendon, harbor master, who's not in the, in the conversation tonight, but had a lot to do with past, that we could get input from John Rendon, look at pros and cons, and at least start the process and get an update next week.
Certainly, counsel had already initiated that several weeks ago, depending upon the outcome of these discussions.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I'm not banking on something new and different happening, just so Mary understands. When this contract, RFP, got put out initially, not a single person was given a copy locally. It was done electronically on something called Commbuys, which is the state's computer system, which is why somebody from Rhode Island actually bid on it. I've talked to a number of people here, they were not even aware, I mean, one person I will identify because he's not here locally is John Omen from Williams, who had no longer had his operation in Orleans. He was actually looking forward to bidding on this, and when I talked to him, he goes, yeah, so when's that coming out at the period of time when it was awarded? I said, it was awarded last week. Nobody locally knew about it.
I agree.
So, if we actually make it clear that we're putting an RFP out, I believe that we're not going to be in a position where we're worried that anybody at all will bid on this because in addition to doing Commbuys, it's perfectly acceptable to known potential bidders, as long as you don't discriminate against anybody, just give them copies of the RFP in addition to what else, whatever else is out there, and just encourage people to bid.
With that said, I think we'll put on the agenda next week, we'll put further discussion on snack shack, RFP, and by then, we should be able to hear from counsel on how fast we can get a reasonable or a good lease that protects the town, and we should be able to put some of the pieces together. Worst-case, Larry, I think the board should consider an RFP for some sort of food truck. We do it at Red River Beach, and allow for people to enjoy the deck and.
Should always have a backup, that's not my point. My point, point is, just move on this.
I agree, and I think looking for, to Don's point, many more people to submit bids. We don't want to rush it, we want to do it right, and I think Joe has mentioned that. I think, I think no matter what, I think we could get some sort of service so that the facility is not dead all summer. So, I will put it back on the agenda next week, we'll get some thought on lease time, and at least put a timeline together, Joe, that we can look at, that two weeks notice to the public, one week or two weeks to get an RFP, 60 days to get a liquor license, and present the board with some options.
And if I may, the thinking being for this season rather than multiple years, is that correct?
I think that we'll put our timeline together and then make that decision. If we go the food truck route or trailer route, I think it would be for this year only because we have a beautiful facility there and we should use it. Roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
I'm an aye.
And I am an aye. Next on the agenda is contracts. This is a possible vote to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Town of Orleans for Council on Aging Supportive Day program.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, very quickly, it would be to authorize the chair to sign. My understanding is that both towns typically have their chairs of the Board of Selectmen sign.
Okay, and then the motion would include authorize the chair to sign. Any, anyone want, this is a renewal? This is a contract?
Correct, this is an annual service. The Town of Orleans does wonderful work in supporting Emily Mitchell's group specifically for the supportive day program impacting upon older adults with dementia or other forms of cognitive.
My motion is going to be much simpler than that. I move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Town of Orleans for the Council on Aging Supportive Day program.
And have the chair sign.
Authorize.
And have the chair sign.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, discussion?
Just to, just to point out, and I'll be brief, this is a renewal memorandum of understanding. The memorandum of understanding is in the packet. I'm just going to read a couple of the whereas. Orleans program has a. Orleans program has a capacity to accept residents of Harwich into the program, but the daily reimbursement rate of $55 per non-resident participant that Orleans receives through a contract with Elder Services of Cape Cod or through a private pay fee does not cover the fully day, full daily cost of $75 per participant. Harwich desires to provide program access for their residents and has offered to make a supplemental payment of $20 per day for each Harwich participant to Orleans to cover the full cost of the program. So this is not a big expense, this is a great service that, that we offer to our residents, and I'm thankful that Orleans allows us to do it.
And it's a check-off, it's a regional approach.
That's correct.
Always positive.
Yeah. With no further discussion, roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Onto the town administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could defer for a moment, our community center director, Carolyn Carey, was hoping to speak under public announcement. She has some updates about hours of operation based on custodial staff, so if you'd allow it, I'd like to yield my time, some of my time there, I do have one other update.
We'll give you extra time. Carolyn, welcome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate, Joe, the opportunity. I just wanted to bring you up to date. Last week, I was able to meet with the assistant town administrator, the DPW director, and the facilities manager to go over what is a, seems to be a, of a reoccurring concern. Although the town buildings will, and town will be going back to its regular schedule of buildings, the community center, due to what the assistant town administrator was referring to as our new normal, based on having to have buildings cleaned and things like that, the community center does not have, through the DPW, enough staff to staff our buildings, so we are still short staff, not the community center itself, but the DPW. I apologize, I feel like I'm all over the board. I do know that Link and Sean have been advertising and most recently put another ad in the paper. We are looking for seasonal help so that we can get back to the hours of extended hours at the community center. Our regular hours were till 9:00 PM. Unfortunately, we just don't have any coverage to help us cleaning and doing that. It is certainly a top priority for myself. I know how important the community sen- is, center is to everyone, and we are doing our very, very best to get it reopened, but on the 15th, we will remain just opened until 4:00 PM, as that's the only coverage we have. Custodians are spread out through every building in town, so there is no additional coverage in our building. So that is the very latest update, and I just wanted to give the public enough time to know that and know that we are working on it, and to put a plug in, if there are people, I know this is difficult times for hiring, but if there is someone who's interested, the highway department is certainly looking for more seasonal custodial help to help us get our buildings back open up and running. Thank you so much for letting me talk.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions for the board?
No.
All set?
Thanks.
Great, thank you. We're going to go back to town administrator's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As has been our practice, there's one update, and it's a contract that I recently signed because it falls under the threshold of chapter 30B and being $50,000 or less, it's a great story. The town had to go out and seek bids for waste disposal services at several of our buildings and, and locations. These are not the beaches, but several other places. And I know that our finance director, the town engineer, assistant town administrator all worked on this remarkably. The, the bids yielded waste disposal services at Town Hall, several different times and locations at Saquon Tucket Harbor, Whichmere Town Pier, Allen Harbor, Community Center, and Cultural Center, and all of that came in at well under $10,000, which was remarkable. We were anticipating something between 10 and 50 to sort of have that come in. So the winning bidder is Cavosa Disposal Corporation out of East Balmouth. Contract begins, or signed May 31st, and it is for $9,860.64 for waste disposal services going from July of this year through June of next year. So it's a great contract to have, just a sign of the times when procurement people get excited about contracts, but getting that level of waste disposal service for that amount of money is certainly remarkable, especially given the economy we're in. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Selectmen's report, Don?
I don't have anything.
Mary?
Um, a couple of things. I think we all got an email about the former Stone Forest Motel. I understood that building was for the people that came here on summer visas, the J1s and the HB2s, or I might have those backed up. Who is living there? And the parking from the photos this person submitted does look a mess, and she claims there's a lot of speeding on Old County Road.
So just, we did all get that email.
Mm-hmm.
If you, if you have concerns, you can always email me the concerns. What I would do with, with generally, and Larry, I believe, started the practice last year, rather than all of us reply, usually the chairman will, will reply, I did reply to the email. More importantly, I sent that to the appropriate place. We're not, until it comes from us, from staff after an investigation, we're really not involved. I forwarded that email to Joe Powers, Megan Eldridge, with a statement, and I saw immediately it was sent to the building commissioner, and that would start with the building commissioner and then come back to the town administrator for us. And Joe, correct me if I was wrong, but that's.
No, you're absolutely right. The reason why the assistant town administrator would be involved with that is that comes under community development, which is her span of control, and it sounds like the process is working right. So as soon as we have information on that, I'll get it right back out to the board, and we'll update the public as well.
Great, thank you.
My intent, Mary too, is not to let these things die in an email.
Right, right.
So they will be followed up on, keeping an active chart of follow-up items. I trust that staff will get back to us in a reasonable amount of time, but building commissioner, we can't, we don't dictate his time, Joe does.
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
We'll keep following up on it anyway and recognize that it certainly is a little different than what it was pitched at the planning board and for the approval, it's quite different. The pandemic is playing a card in that because the J1s weren't.
Right.
So I think the owners of the property are trying to rent space to local workers that can't find housing, which is a much more complex problem throughout the Cape is, is housing. But that's not what that was permitted for, we recognize that, and it's been sent on.
The other thing is, I was just looking to see, was talk about a meeting with the restaurants. Is that scheduled, or? I just feel like the summer is already getting kind of lively here and.
Based on our emails today, I would say you are correct, and, and part of my report was going to be to ask Joe, and now you've asked Joe, so Joe.
Yep. Chief Kilmatt and I spoke last week, we're targeting next week to have that annual licensee meeting, and so that's not just administration and public safety, but also the regulatory agencies. And just to remind everybody, as we are into the summer months, what's expected of them under their licenses and, and what we will be expecting from them and what they should be expecting from us as far as vigilance and surveillance, for, for lack of a better phrase. We held off on that just to get a number of things in line before we did that, so it's a little bit later than we'd like, but I think we're well-served, but I also know that it's very timely to get it done next week.
Okay, no date yet.
Um, I, I don't know if the chief's still on, I, I'm still in vacation mode, I want to say it was the 15th, but I don't want to state the wrong date. And to my rescue, perhaps, is our chief.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, and, and Joe, my recollection of our conversation was we're going to try and get it done as soon as possible after the 15th.
Thank you. So we will have a date for the selectmen next week on Monday night?
Yes.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Um, Don declined, Mary, Larry?
We've scheduled several times and postponed, but I think tomorrow at 3:45, we have our chance to, to visit the Cape Cod Tech and be toured through.
That is correct.
I'm excited to have a chance to walk through and see what's there, so. Yeah, and Joe, we will, we will meet there, I assume, at 3:45?
Yes, that's the plan, if anything changes, well, everybody knows.
We're not thinking about it from here, right? We can.
Yeah. Say again?
Posted.
I believe it has been posted, we will confirm all that.
It has not been posted, but we do have a legal opinion that we do not have to post.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It is not a gathering of the board of selectmen, it's a tour of something we previously voted, we will not be talking finances, we will not, but we do have a written legal opinion that I have asked that that be put into the file.
Thank you.
Where are we meeting?
And I have, what's that?
Where are we meeting?
Meet at the tax school, right at the front entrance. Yeah. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?